The meeting of the Broward County Commission is about to begin. Will all audience members please silence your cell phones? For those viewing from home or on mobile devices, thank you for watching. To stay informed about Broward County government, please visit broward.org or follow us on social media. County Commission meetings are open to the public. Members of the public wishing to be heard on any agenda item can register one of two ways. Visit registortospeak.broward.org and fill out the online registration form. Or scan the QR code posted in various locations inside and just outside the commission chambers to register on your mobile device. A registration form must be completed for each item you wish to speak on. If you have trouble registering digitally, visit county administration on the fourth floor for assistance. All speakers must appear in person. No further speaker sign-ups will be accepted after an item has been called. Please show respect for others and refrain from making impertinent slanderous remarks or personal attacks. Boisterous behavior including applause, booing, and cheering is not permitted. Thank you for joining us. The meeting will begin shortly.
Okay, we've got five. Bogan. Get him. Okay. Calling the meeting to order, please, Commissioner Bogan. No, no.
Good morning. How are you? Thank you.
Got a busy day.
This is a crazy day for me.
Do you think I could get some attention here? We're calling the meeting to order, please. Okay. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. This is the Broward County Board of County Commissioners meeting of Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. This morning, I would like to invite Tom Campbell, CEO of the Broward Partnership for the Homeless, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. It is customary that we observe a moment of silence in honor of notable persons from our community who have recently passed. Colleagues, does anyone have anyone that they wish to remember during this moment of silence? Commissioner McKenzie?
Oh, twice. Let me go first. Yes, this morning, Don Bailey, a community advocate, contractor. Don Bailey, community advocate, contractor, has done many, many things to advance our affordable housing way before it became a fancy phrase. And not, it's not a pun to anyone, but they were doing affordable housing way back when housing wasn't even available in my neighborhood. So, Don Bailey also was an inspector for Miami-Dade for years, and I worked in the Miami-Dade school system as well. Don Bailey.
Thank you. So, there are a few people I'd like to take note of this morning that don't live in our community but made an impact in our country. Thelma Mothershedware died on October 19th at age 83. She was a member of the Little Rock Nine. But the Little Rock Nine were the first African-American students to attend Little Rock's Central High School in September of 1957, more than three years after the Supreme Court's decision in Brown versus Board. The violent opposition of white segregationists became so severe that President Eisenhower had to deploy the 101st Airborne Division of the United States Army to escort these students to school. Let us remember Thelma for her bravery and courage in the face of adversity. Her life is a testament to the fact that liberty is never given. It must be won by those who are willing to fight for justice. Lily Lynn McDaniel Ledbetter died on October 12th at the age of 86. She was an American activist who was the plaintiff in the United States Supreme Court case Ledbetter versus Goodyear Tire and Rubber regarding employment discrimination. Two years after the Supreme Court decided that Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 does not allow employers to be sued for pay discrimination more than 180 days after an employee's first paycheck, the United States Congress passed the Lily Ledbetter Fair Pay Act of 2009. Subsequently, she became a women's activist, equality activist, public speaker, and author. And she was inducted into the National Women's Hall of Fame. And lastly, Ethel Kennedy died October 10th at the age of 96. Born Ethel Shackle in Chicago, she married US Senator Robert F. Kennedy, becoming a sister-in-law of President John Kennedy. After the assassination of her husband in 1968, Ethel Kennedy founded the Robert F. Kennedy Center for Justice and Human Rights. In 2014, she was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom by President Obama for her dedication to advancing the cause of social justice, human rights, environmental protection, and poverty reduction by creating countless ripples of hope to affect change around the world. Let us also honor the brave men and women who have served and continue to serve in our armed forces, both here and abroad, and thank them for their service. A moment of silence, please. Please take your seats. Welcome to our Broward County Commission meeting of October 22nd. This is our last meeting before the November 5th election. And early voting began yesterday, as many of you know. So far, 115,671 votes have been cast in Broward County out of 1.1 million active eligible voters. The deadline, that's great. The deadline to request a vote-by-mail ballot is this Thursday, October 24th, before 5:00 p.m. Early voting sites will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., now through November 3rd. For a list of early voting sites and vote-by-mail drop-off sites, visit www.browardvotes.gov. Today's music was selected by me. The two songs I selected are "Turn the World Around" by Harry Belafonte and "Imagine" by John Lennon. Moving on, we have three proclamations today. And the first will be recognized as in November as National Homeless Awareness Month, and it will be presented by myself to, I'm going to go down this list. Mikel Cartier, CEO, Task Force Ending Homeless. Jacob Turner, VP Programs, Task Force Ending Homelessness. Lily Gilardo, Director Programming Services, the Salvation Army. Tom Campbell, CEO, Broward Partnership for the Homeless. Eliana Dorville, Broward Partnership for the Homeless Chief Programs, Program Officer. Francisco Gomez, Care Resource Community Health Centers, Housing Services Manager. Mary Ferr La Cruz, Care Resource Community Health Centers, Housing Services Supervisor. Eric Kuzminsky, Care Resource Community Health Centers. Felicia Burel, Flight Center, Director of Housing. Trayvon Richardson, Hope South Florida, Performance and Quality Improvement Manager. George Rich, Hope South Florida, Director of Operations. Sheena Kitt, Women in Distress, Chief Operating Officer. Rocco Karakow, Broward Housing Solutions, CEO. Amanda McCormick, Broward Housing Solutions, Chief Program Officers. And would they all please join me at the podium? And I just want to say, this can give you an idea of the wealth of resources and providers we have in Broward County that are focused on homelessness. Do you want me to hand them out?
You can when you're finished, gentlemen.
Okay, welcome. Good to see you this morning, too. I just want to thank everybody for coming this morning. And as I said, we have such a wealth of services, providers in this community. And we're just really so proud that all of you are out there in our community working hard to help solve the problem of homelessness. Thank you. Whereas National Homelessness Awareness Month is observed in November, and whereas the month is a time to recognize the issue of homelessness, acknowledge the efforts of those helping people experiencing homelessness, and raise awareness about the need to prevent homelessness. And whereas communities across the nation are witnessing a concerning rise in the number of people experiencing homelessness with nearly 600,000 individuals without stable housing in the United States, as reported by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And whereas communities need to ensure safe, secure, and affordable housing for all residents, recognizing that collaborative efforts among local, state, and federal partners are crucial to address and eradicate homelessness effectively. And whereas homelessness is a complex issue affecting millions of people worldwide, impacting individuals and families from all walks of life, and is often the result of a lack of affordable housing, poverty, mental health issues, economic hardship. And whereas Broward County is committed to implementing comprehensive strategies that include prevention measures, emergency response initiatives, increasing the affordable housing inventory, and long-term solutions to ensure that every individual has access to safe shelter, support, and employment opportunities. And whereas we recognize and honor the invaluable contributions of local organizations, volunteers, and advocates who work tirelessly to provide support and empower homeless individuals to regain their dignity and independence. Your efforts are appreciated and motivate us to do more. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Broward County, Florida, that the Board observes November 2024 as National Homelessness Awareness Month in Broward County, Florida, as we encourage all residents, businesses, and community organizations to work collaboratively towards solutions that will end homelessness in our community. Signed by myself as mayor. Congratulations to all of you.
We're going to take a photo with everybody. Why don't you just say a few words?
Oh, sure. On behalf of the many people behind me and back at the office that make all this magic happen every day, thank you for the funding, for the support, for everything that this commission does to work to reduce homelessness and work to create more affordable housing in this community. We appreciate you. Thank you.
And then we're going to walk over there and take a picture with the commission, everybody. Hope we have enough.
Come here.
We always get her in the middle.
He's going to have all thirty of them.
We'll get a picture.
Watch your hands, man.
Come on, come on.
If there's a photo op, I'm here.
All right.
to present this. This is the proclamation for Friends of the Library, and it will be presented by our own Vice Mayor, Beam Fur. And I know that Karen Smith is here, President of the Friends of the Library, and Vice Mayor Fur will introduce some of the other people that are joining her. And everybody also recognizes Allison. Thank you for being with us today.
Vice Mayor Fur.
Allison.
Vice Mayor Fur.
How you doing?
I just wanted to tease them. Vice Mayor Fur.
Vice Mayor Fur, are you still the only elected librarian in the nation?
In the world, maybe. Maybe in the world. I think it might have changed by then. Today we have a lot of friends here from our Broward County Library, and we're lucky, we have one of the best library systems anywhere in the world. And part of the reason is, a lot of these people behind me. They are the ones who help make our library. They make they make sure all the, it always looks good, and they they put on all kinds of events that help with fundraising for conferences, help our staff go to go to conferences and professional development. But they also just kind of keep everybody engaged and do all kinds of events and things. So almost, most of our libraries have a Friends group, and and I'm really thankful for that. And hopefully, we can get a group in every in every library. We're almost got there. We're almost there. This is also the week for Reach Out and Read, the Read for the Record, and I wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that. For those who don't know, Broward County, that is a worldwide event, Reach Reach Out, Reach Out for the Record. And Broward County kind of blows everybody away with how many we have. This this year, we know, well, we're going to be handing out around 40,000 books. We have around 1,200 volunteers. And so it's still time, it's going to be on Thursday, this Thursday. So if anybody here or out there in TV land wants to volunteer to to read, it will be Thursday, and you can go to Hands on Broward, and they and you can sign up for a school in your area. Okay, with that, Allison, would you like to say anything?
I would love to say something.
Okay, great. Before I before I start.
Thank you, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor, County Administration. I am so pleased to have the opportunity for us to collectively honor our Friends of the Library. Their donation of time, effort, energy, their expertise in certain subject matters help us provide a world-class library. So it is with with great honor that I am here today to to help recognize them. So, thank you.
I'll read the proclamation, then I might ask Karen to, okay? Okay, with that, I'll read the proclamation, and then Karen, you can speak for everybody. How's that? Okay. Whereas the Friends of Broward County Library Incorporated, an umbrella organization bringing together leaders of local Friends chapters from each branch and regional library, is committed to supporting democracy, lifelong learning, and opportunities for all. And whereas they work to increase awareness of the many ways the library connects with the community, providing not just informational resources, but research and technology assistance, readers' advisories, job searches, and information utilization. And whereas the Friends work to provide funding for additional programming, materials, and equipment, and supports special events throughout the year. And whereas they understand the importance of well-funded libraries and advocate at the state and county levels for funding to meet existing and changing needs. And whereas the Friends give many volunteer hours to enhance and expand the services and resources libraries can provide to our community. And whereas the Friends of Broward County Library's gift of time and commitment provides a positive example of civic engagement that benefits the community, now therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Broward County, Florida, that the Board hereby designates October 21st to October 27th, 2024, as a Friends of Broward County Library Week, and urge everyone to extend thanks and appreciation to them for all they do to make our libraries and communities a much better place. Signed by our Mayor, Nan Rich. And with that, Karen, if you could speak to, speak for the Friends.
It is an honor for me to represent the Friends of the Broward County Libraries, also known as F O B C L. We would like first like to first thank the Broward County Board of County Commissioners for giving us an opportunity to volunteer our time, our talent, and our support to the branches throughout Broward County. I am proud to share with the Board that the Friends chapter have now over 2,000 members, and we are continuing to grow. Last year, we provide over $2,333 in support of programs in the in the branches. Thank you for the proclamation and recognizing National Friends of Library Week.
Thank you, Karen. And why don't we do a picture up here? Okay. What is the rest?
Yeah, there's the for the other.
Look here, if you look right here.
Okay, you are. We have one final proclamation today. If every woman, please take your seats up here, please, at the dais. We have one proclamation left. It's for United Hate, United Against Hate Week, and it will be presented by Commissioner Lamar Fisher. And we have our esteemed State Attorney with us, Harold Pryor. You would come forward.
Come on, Lamar, what's going on?
Did you get the names?
I'm going to give them to you right now. I already I already mentioned our State Attorney, if you were paying attention. Okay. I said our esteemed. Okay, we have also Neva Rainford Smith, Deputy Chief Assistant Attorney, State Attorney, Veronica Walker, Assistant State Attorney and Chair to the Broward County Hate Crimes Task Force, Dr. Jermaine Smith-Bah, President and CEO of the Urban League of Broward County, Kirsty Miles, Esquire, Director of Policy and Government Relations, Fallon Johnson, Division Manager of Community Justice, Mo Tadir Naim, Islamic Foundation of South Florida, Evan Goldman, Executive Director of Public Affairs, Jewish Federation of Broward County, Karen Zimmel, Chair, Jewish Federation Relations, Community Relations Council, Denise LeTo, Chair, Alsey Hastings, Broward Black Jewish Alliance. And I think everybody is at the podium. So, turn it over to you.
Are we all here?
Yep, everybody's there.
Let's cheer.
All right, okay, all right.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, it's just such an honor to be able to present this proclamation because it truly hits home, not here in Broward County, but throughout the United States. And so we are honored to be able to present this. Harold, thank you so much for being here, my man. Says, whereas Broward County is committed to ensuring that every resident, visitor, and community member can live, work, and play, and worship in a safe and inclusive environment, free from hate and prejudice. As Broward County does not and will not tolerate discrimination, hate crimes, harassment, or assault against persons or property motivated by bias against race, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, age, or homeless status. As the Broward State Attorney's Office established the Hate Crimes Unit to rigorously prosecute crimes committed against individuals because of a perpetrator prejudiced in reinforcing a commitment to justice and equality. Whereas the Urban League of Broward County's Youth Hate Crime Education and Prevention Program is dedicated to educating the community about the impact of hate crimes, providing guidance on reporting such crimes, and offering vital resources to those victimized, particularly focusing on our youth. Whereas this initiative fosters collaboration between law enforcement, community, and faith-based organizations in broader communities, builds trust, and is essential in encouraging and reporting of hate crimes with the ultimate goal of reducing their prevalence here in Broward County. Whereas the Urban League of Broward County's Youth Hate Crimes Task Force and Broward County State Attorney's Office Hate Crimes Task Force will both engage in schools and organize community events throughout the county to address hate crimes, promote awareness, and support affected individuals. As establishing the third week of October as United Against Hate Week will serve as an annual reminder of Broward County unwavering commitment to standing against hate crimes and fostering a community united in the values exclusively, respect, and also justice for all. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners that the Board hereby proclaims the week of October 21st through the 27th, 2024, as United Against Hate Week in Broward County, Florida, and encourages all of our residents to participate in related activities and events, to stand together against hate, and to support efforts to create a safer and more inclusive community for all. Signed by our Mayor, Nan Rich. Mr. Pryor, I'm so honored to give this to you and your entire team, and all you do on a daily basis, to have to fight hate crimes. But hopefully, we can unite together and eliminate it all together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll be brief. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Thank you to the Broward County Commission. Thank you for all the work that you do and also the collaboration. This United Against Hate Week is important because in order for us to combat this persistent evil, right, throughout the world, but also it rears its ugly head here in South Florida, we can't operate as entities or institutions in the criminal justice system or institutions throughout the county in our own silos. We have to collaborate. We have to unite. And so the individuals and the organizations behind me, we have the Jewish Federation, we have the Alsey Hastings Black Jewish Alliance. We also have members from our Islamic Foundation of South Florida, and also the Urban League of Broward County, Dr. Jermaine Bah and her staff. We were able to come together to find ways to combat this evil. And oftentimes, we have people, children, who may commit some of these hate crimes, and we have to educate them. And we went to the Urban League, and we decided to create a curriculum where we could better educate these children. Because what we learn is that hate, you're not born with it. Sometimes it's learned, right? And so I'm extremely proud of the work that we've done as an agency with the Broward State Attorney's Office. I'm extremely proud of the work of our Assistant State Attorney, Veronica Walker, who is heading that unit. She has done an amazing job, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my Deputy Chief, Diva Rainford Smith, who came to me with this idea in order for us to secure the William Shepherd and James Byrd Grant from the Department of Justice, where we've received almost a million dollars in grant funding to create our Hate Crimes Task Force, where we could collaborate with BSO and various law enforcement agencies and federal agencies to combat this evil. So thank you for your commitment. Thank you to the Broward County community, and let's continue to work together and collaborate to fight against hate. So thank you.
Let's all get a picture. Let's all get a picture.
The reading clerk, please read the Tuesday morning memo.
Tuesday Agenda Memorandum. The following are submitted for your consideration. Consent items are 1 through 48. Public hearing items are 49 through 55. Regular items are 56 through 64. The following are submitted for your consideration. Consent items are 1 through 48. Public hearing items are 49 through 55. Regular items are 56 through 64. I request the following withdrawals and scriven or error corrections, and note the following additional information. Withdrawals, deferrals, substitutions, item number 57, withdrawn for further staff review. Scrivener errors, none. Additional information, item number 2, revised signature page has been received. Item number 63, Vice Mayor Beam Fur request to be added as a co-sponsor. Mayor request without objection. Item number 3, be moved to regular. Items number 56, 58, and 63, be moved to consent. Time certain, none. Additional material, regular meeting, items 1A through 1B, board appointments. Item number 19, memo and proposed ordinance amendments to the Board from the town of Coconut Creek submitted by County Administration. Item number 19, per N2, memo to the Board submitted by Resilient Environment. The following are submitted for your consideration. Consent items are 1 through 48, public hearing items are 49 through 55, regular items are 56 through 64. I request the following withdrawals and scribbler error corrections, and note the following additional information. Withdrawals, deferrals, substitutions, item number 57 withdrawn for further staff review. Scrivener errors, none. Additional information, item number 2, revised signature page has been received. Item number 63, Vice Mayor Bean for a request to be added as a co-sponsor. May request without objection. Item number 3, be moved to regular. Items number 56, 58, and 63, be moved to consent. Time certain, none. Additional material, regular meeting. Items 1A through 1B, board appointments. Item number 19, memo and proposed ordinance amendments to the board from the town of Coconut Creek submitted by county administration. Item number 19, per N2, memo to the board submitted by Resilient Environment Department. Item number 19, per N3, memo and proposed letter of understanding to the board from Dumars, Alsworth, Laystrom, Voight, Adair, and Dishewitz LLP. On behalf of Waste Management, Inc., submitted by county administration. Item number 19, per N4, letter to the board from the town of Coconut Creek, submitted by county administration. Item number 28, memo to the board submitted by Human Resources Division. Item number 57, proposed ordinance amendments submitted by Public Works Department. Items number 61 and 62, property use agreements table submitted by county administration. Additional material, public hearing, none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any polls from the consent agenda?
I don't have any polls, but what I would like to do is take my items 61 and 62 and put it on consent.
Is that permissible?
It's permissible. I mean, the items don't require discussion.
Okay. Are you making a motion? Make a motion?
That would be my motion to put 61 and 62, my items, on the consent agenda.
Okay. It's a motion to move it to consent.
Yes, it's better to have a vote to move it to consent, and if it moves to consent, then it would be taken up with the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay. Any objection?
I have no objection to that, but I have to pull item 26 for a recusal.
Okay, well first, let's do this.
Just on his.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's do consent, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Udine, you had an item?
Item 26, simply for a recusal.
Okay.
Item number 24, Madam Mayor, that's for comments.
24?
Comment.
Hold on just a second. 24.
I'd like to pull item 22 for comment only.
Okay, 22, okay, and 22 as well. And 63.
Mayor on.
Okay, hold on just one second, let's just get that. 63, 22, okay. And, Commissioner Bogan?
16, 17, and 18.
16, 17, 18, and 19. Okay, Commissioner Ryan, did you have something?
Yeah, I also want to pull item 42 for discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher? Okay, good. Okay, all right. So, we have the polls. So, any polls from county administration?
Item 19.
Okay, that's already polled, too. 19, okay. Anything else? Mr. Melton, anything from you? Okay, anyone from the public? Kim? Public polls?
Just item 19.
Just item 19, okay. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the county attorney to go over the agenda and give us the items that were, on which we are about to vote.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioners, I apologize if I missed any, I couldn't hear some of the polls, but I think I got them. The consent agenda is items 1 through 48, less the following items. Item 3 was moved to regular. Items 16, 17, 18, and 19 were polled and can be taken up together, Mayor.
Yes.
Item 22 was polled, item 24 was polled, and item 26 was polled for an abstention. I think those were the only polls, and then added...
42 was polled, actually?
Forty?
I didn't hear that one.
Not 42.
No.
Commissioner Ryan.
No.
And then added to the consent agenda are items 56, 58, 61, and 62.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, yes.
I move approval of the consent agenda as read by the county attorney.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Udine. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see. Okay, so now, let's go to the items on the consent agenda that were polled. So, we have, okay, it appears the lowest, number one, would be the 16, 17, 18, and 19.
We have, we can take up also 3 if you want, Mayor, if you'd like.
Take up 3 as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, item number 3?
And Mayor, just for the board's understanding of this, it was only polled in an abundance of caution because it's an airport item, and it may exceed the threshold. That was the only reason.
I'll move item 3.
Okay, item 3 has been moved, seconded by Vice Mayor Farr.
Does that have to be read? If it's an airport item, does it have to be read?
It just has to be in the, done on the regular agenda. It could not hurt to read, just to introduce it for one second, and...
I'll delay my motion for 15 seconds.
And I can read it. It's a motion to approve a third amendment to agreement between the county and Fuel Facility Management LLC.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous then. Okay, now, we'll move on to 16, 17, 18, and 19, which have been pulled, all of them. And Commissioner Bogan, you want to open on that, please?
Do you want to use a public speaker first?
We probably do, I would imagine. We have, we have one? One public speaker? Okay.
Yes, we have one public speaker on item 19, and that person is Joshua Rydel.
Josh Rydel. Mayor Rydel? Please, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you.
Good morning.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the county commission. Just real quick, today's a set for. I was here last time, I just sat in the back and was quiet. I just want to talk three quick points. I'm gonna hand this up to the, to your county attorney, Mr. Myers, to pass out. Was a letter transmitted to upper-level staff last night? It's probably in your backup somewhere, but I know how daisies get, and I know how backups get, and I know you don't necessarily always see that, so I'd ask you to take a read of that letter regarding this item. Three quick things, just as an elected official. As an elected official, we deal with things privilege versus right. Privilege versus right. When somebody comes here and they have the right to do something, we have to maintain ourselves a little bit different in how we judge that and what they can do. When it's a privilege to do something, boards like this, boards like municipal city commissions, have the ability of putting conditions on things. They have the ability of calling for certain requirements, because it's not a right, it's a privilege, and I urge this board to do that. And also, from the last meeting that I spoke at, there was kind of a consensus to, hey, when we're writing this potential ordinance, get with the cities. Still hasn't happened. And it wasn't until about two meetings ago that the Solid Waste Authority has been apprised by the county in regarding these potential land use changes. I have one real request today, and it's for one of you, just to ask the applicant, simply, because I've heard a lot of due process arguments here. We want to give the applicant the due process to be heard. One of you, I ask, just ask the applicant, are you okay having this heard three months from now when the Solid Waste Authority comes to a conclusion? Because there's one asset here that we're forgetting. The one asset is the waste-to-energy generation plat that it is currently zoned as. They're not using it to that. But the county, the Solid Waste Authority, doesn't want to give that necessarily item, that land use component, up. I assure you, you don't want to do that. So, if you ask Mr. Laystrom candidly, "Mr. Laystrom, are you okay with a set for in February?", I'm curious to see his answer. Because the truth is, this is a privilege, not a right, and I understand due process. But I ask that question, get asked, because there's a lot of people countywide that are trying to figure the way of the future. And by giving up what Monarch Hill has in terms of its land use, candidly, is foolish at this point until the Solid Waste Authority at least has the ability of chiming in. And candidly, to Vice Mayor Farr's credit, we're finally at that discussion. We're really robust, and I don't think there's ever going to be waste-to-energy generation in South County. I think the Vice Mayor could highlight that in regarding the advocacy of how South County feels about it. North County may feel a little bit different. And when you look at private-public partnerships, that's what we're talking about. So, I would just urge you to not do anything today, then just to ask the applicant, are you good with a longer set for date? It's pretty simple. So, that's my request, because then you'll see if they're really here because they think it's a privilege or a right. Thank you.
You have a question? Go ahead.
So, whether you're standing here as a resident of Broward or as a commissioner from Coconut Creek, do you have a position on any of these items?
Yeah, we absolutely oppose them.
Why?
So, you gotta realize, it's not just, I'm not here unreasonable, Commissioner Bogan. I don't represent the city in an unreasonable capacity. So, we object to not being involved in the process. Your ordinance is deficient as it is with a settlement agreement that exists between Waste Management and Coconut Creek. So, the ordinance that you're looking at potentially is in conflict with that. So, there's a real global conversation. The county has spent years of resources, decades of Commissioner Farr's life, creating a Solid Waste Authority to look at what the future holds. We're all foolish to think that there's not going to be a component of landfilling in some capacity, but for this commission to just say, "The ordinance is good as is, CND unlimited, you're good to go," that's not appropriate in terms of how we're moving forward. So, on behalf of the city of Coconut Creek, on behalf of my staff that comes to every single one of these meetings, we object to what is as is, and ask for a later set for date. And I've said to all of you in private meetings, right, I'm on the Solid Waste Authority. We'll abide by what that comes forward, but let's get there how we need to get there. Did that answer your question? I object.
What about, what about this conflicts with the agreement you have with Waste Management, the city has with Waste Management?
So, I mean, if you take a look at that letter that I passed up to Drew, did you pass it out?
I have it because... They did receive it in their backup yesterday, I can hand it out if...
And the only reason I did that is because I know how backups get. It may have gone by the wayside, especially it was transmitted by my city manager late last night, so I mean, there's a copy there if you want to look at it. There is definitely some conflicts because Waste Management has essentially agreed to limit processable waste. Now, under the proposed amendment, that's a legal binding settlement agreement, one of the first times in the country Waste Management has done that with Coconut Creek. So, there's never been an opportunity, Commissioner Bogan, with all due respect to County Attorney Myers and his office, for my city attorney who's sitting right here to go and have an in-person meeting to hash out what that means in a settlement agreement to a prospective ordinance change in a land use rezoning, and especially an expanded use. Like, that should kind of happen before we're having a public discussion, and I'm bringing 100 people at the next meeting here. And I don't say that for any other reason, because people in my city care. It's not about, you know, "Oh, we gotta deal with Coconut..." It's not that. It's just, give us a seat at the table, and give us a seat of what waste looks like in 40 years here.
County attorney, do you want to respond?
Yes, and there's, you know, there's nothing in the ordinance that, negate whatever the terms of the settlement agreement are, that's a freestanding document between Waste Management and the city. That said, I'm confident that what's going to be proposed here, before all is said and done, and there's a final vote on these matters, is not going to have anything in there that's inconsistent with that document. We're recognizing it, I'm not going to get in front of Waste Management. It itself submitted a letter to the Board of County Commissioners that shows that it's very mindful of what the restrictions are under that agreement. So, I think there's, at some point, there is a due process right, a procedural right to move forward. I agree with you that ultimately, these are legislative decisions, and this board needs to consider, as a regional body, what is in the best interest of the county. And I express no opinion about the timing and when the Solid Waste Authority is going to issue whatever it's going to issue, but I do want to remind the board that it's this board's responsibility, not the responsibility of the Solid Waste Authority, to make sure that there's adequate disposal capacity for everybody that needs it within the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogan.
Mr. Laystrom, did you want to comment? Your call.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
At the appropriate time, I'd like to speak on this.
Sure.
I want to introduce, though...
Yeah, sure.
Bill Laystrom, on behalf of Waste Management. We appreciate your time today. You have asked me to delay this for the last two and a half to three years. If I actually thought that something would be done between now and February that would be of significance, the Solid Waste Authority has just completed its study, which shows that 20% of your waste stream is not processable, there's no place to put it. Even if you built a plant, started tomorrow, you'd take at least as long as we do to recreate these things. So, it's time to consider this one. You have both the height amendment, as well as the land use plan amendment, to at least hear all the evidence, and it's finally time to do that. I've been in front of most of you for years, this is the first five-year land use amendment that I've had. It's not a threat, it's just, it's time. You're gonna need that landfill space for storm debris. You could see that from the challenges in Tampa and Pinellas right now, trying to find landfill space for the storm debris that was just most recently generated. We have a lengthy presentation on all of our environmental controls as well. Let's get this thing going and have that hearing. It's not going to change in three months, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a comment, Commissioner Bogan?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think we have 50 years of land, we have space on our own landfill. You said we need space for where we can put things. We have 50 years or more of space on our own landfill. But putting that aside, look, nine years ago, I was here, it was my first year here, I think, and Waste Management was seeking to expand, and I brought a audio tape of one of Waste Management's attorneys, and the audio tape was where they were representing to the city of Coconut Creek, "Hey, grant us this time, and we're not going to seek any more expansion." And that audio tape was, I don't know, maybe a decade or more ago, and here we are, a decade later, and they're seeking expansion. And I'm just opposed to, on behalf of the people of the communities between Coconut Creek, Deerfield Beach, Pompano Beach, Margate, you know, who have just seen this thing become, you know, pretty soon the Empire State Building. So, I gotta oppose that. The only thing I want to do before I let go is ask our county attorney, I'm one of these, I think it's 18, I wanted to see about, I think I communicated with you about amending it to add either horizontal or vertical. Do you remember?
Yes, sir. So, 18 would, it's also set for public hearing, would limit what could be put into any landfill above 225 feet, which only deals with vertical. We don't think there's a good fit on that for horizontal, it would have unintended consequences, but to the extent there is a concern, and it's going to be a legislative decision by this board, so the board has tremendous discretion, to the extent there is a concern with what mix of waste would go into any horizontal expansion, for example, at Monarch Hill, we think that's something that could be effectively addressed outside of item 18.
Outside of 18, yes, sir. Okay. So, I'm done. Thank you.
Senator Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have, well, I partially agree with what our speaker said in reference to one of the items only, which is item, I believe it's 16, is 16 the land use change?
16 and 17 are both land use changes for horizontal and 19...
Which is the one that would eliminate, change the land use on the area that is currently a burner?
16 and 17.
Okay. First of all, Commissioner Bogan, all politics is local. You are aggressively representing your district as you should, and we all fully understand that. I have a somewhat similar issue. I represent much of southwest Broward, and there are concerns down there as well. And although all, any decision that I make on any zoning matters in front of us will be based strictly on the competent substantial evidence in front of us at that time that we're making a zoning decision, I do have concerns about the idea of building another burner in southwest Broward, where you'd have then two burner, our existing site, the Wheeler Brader site, and one right by the Everglades on US 27. So, my only concern, and I'm not going to object today, because this is just a motion to set for public hearing, but I am concerned about changing the land use, because if we take away, if we change the land use from a place that already is permitted as a burner site, I think that that could increase the pressure if we're going to build another burner, to build it in southwest Broward. And I don't want one built in southwest Broward, so I prefer to keep the northwest Broward site as an alternative option. Therefore, I have expressed this concern to Waste Management. I am not, I will vote for this today, because it's setting for public...
First of all, Commissioner Bogan, all politics is local. You are aggressively representing your district as you should, and we all fully understand that. I have a somewhat similar issue. I represent much of southwest Broward, and there are concerns down there as well. And although all, any decision that I make on any zoning matters in front of us will be based strictly on the competent substantial evidence in front of us at that time that we're making a zoning decision, I do have concerns about the idea of building another burner in southwest Broward where you'd have then two burner, our existing site, the Wheel of Brader site, and one right by the Everglades on US 27. So, my only concern, and I'm not going to object today because this is just a motion to set for public hearing, but I am concerned about changing the land use because if we take away, if we change the land use from a place that already is permitted as a burner site, I think that that could increase the pressure if we're going to build another burner to build it in southwest Broward. And I don't want one built in southwest Broward, so I prefer to keep the northwest Broward site as an alternative option. Therefore, I have expressed this concern to Waste Management. I am not, I will vote for this today because it's setting for public hearing, but I just want to let everyone know that I'm, you know, I'm going to give great deference, of course, to the findings of the solid waste authority, but great deference doesn't mean I'm going to do whatever they say. So, I do have concerns about not building in southwest Broward, and I am concerned if we pass 16 and 17, that could increase the pressure. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Tim, please. Commissioner Ryan.
Call me, Tim. So, my interest is the mix of solid waste that, you know, we would, you know, have incinerated over there on Griffin Road and 441. Maybe somebody can speak to that issue about what type of optimal mix do we look for, you know, in order to burn the food waste, you know, the organic? Is it, you know, difficult to burn just food waste without some kind of a mix of perhaps construction debris or, you know, some other type of waste stream? Do we have somebody that can speak to that?
You're asking? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Chris Carey with WM. I did work for the Wheel of Brader Division for 24 years in the waste energy industry, so I know a couple of things about it. So, that waste energy plant there, I ran that for quite some time myself. It's not designed to burn construction and demolition debris and bulky waste. You can have a little bit of that bulky waste in there, but it's designed to burn and process what we termed processable waste, which is household waste. It's what you and I put out at the curb every day. It includes food waste, but it includes a mix of food waste and packaging and generally non-recyclable items. Now, some of the cities in Broward County have opted to cease household recycling now, a number of them, which has increased the amount of recyclable material going to that facility, and they're processing that into clean renewable energy every day. So, to answer your question, that facility can handle food waste without any trouble whatsoever, but what it can't process is generally what goes into Monarch Hill, which is bulky waste and construction and demolition debris.
All right, so...
Does that answer your question?
It's your opinion that a mix of construction and, you know, debris with the food waste, you know, is not an optimal mix. Optimal mix is just pure food waste.
Not pure food waste, but food waste and other household waste, not construction and demolition debris.
Well, and you say other household waste. I mean, aren't you talking about, you know, what waste stream we would otherwise look to recycle? Cardboard, plastic, glass, you know, that, you know, regrettably is not being, you know, recycled at the level that we should be doing so in Broward County. So, seems to me that an aggressive recycling program would be best for the environment and the citizens and residents of Broward County. Unless, you know, do you feel otherwise?
Well, so, there's kind of two parts to that question. So, at my house, for example, we have a recycling bin and a waste bin, right? And we try to put everything in that recycling bin that can be recycled, clean cardboard, aluminum, glass, clean paper. Anything that's not clean really can't be recycled. We put that into the trash can, right? And we put those two streams out at once. So, I would absolutely agree with you that an aggressive and comprehensive recycling plan is best for the county, but there still remains a significant fraction of waste that must be disposed of other than at the recycling plant. And I can tell you from experience that what we get at the recycling facility out in Pembroke Pines, about 40% of that is removed, cannot be recycled, and gets sent for disposal otherwise.
Now, that part of the potential recyclables that have to be removed from the recycling waste stream, is that primarily paper products?
No, sir.
Cardboard, or are you also seeing a large percentage of plastic, you know, glass?
Neither of those, sir. It would be things like a garden hose, things like a, you know, a child's plastic toy that can't be recycled, things like batteries that are getting in there, those types of things. No, the clean paper, the clean cardboard, the glass, the aluminum, all of that is getting recycled. It's all of the other things that end up in that...
Well, certainly the aluminum, but, you know, my understanding is, you know, if the paper, you know, is spoiled, if it's wet, then it can't be recycled.
Yeah, if it's wet, if it's greasy, if it's oily, things like that, yeah.
To the county administrator, I think that you recently, you know, have authorized some type of a study, a limited study on, you know, some recycling of, I think it's perhaps yard waste, glass, and construction debris. Can you comment on that, on, you know, what's the extent of this study, you know? How much is it, you know, how extensive will it be and, you know, when can we expect to hear, you know, what the analysis and results are?
Yes, you're exactly right. We engaged with, I think I mentioned that during some of our budget hearings, that we were looking at doing a short-term evaluation, and we engaged with HDR Consulting last week, and they've already initiated a study on the three streams that you just described, yard waste, CND, and glass. And it's really just to kind of look at how to optimize the county's waste at our county landfill. And we're looking at, they're going to be looking at collection methodologies and things that we might be able to utilize and maybe do better to be more efficient and try to streamline how that is brought in.
Has your team, you know, done any kind of a, you know, analysis of the ability of us to, you know, really ramp up a, you know, recycling component at, you know, southwest Broward? You know, because we talked about, you know, the waste energy work and, you know, recycling and, you know, the incinerator is just over there on, you know, southeast Broward, not southwest, and I don't think anybody really wants to see, you know, an incinerator out there, especially with the concerns that we have about, you know, northwest Dade and Miami Dade County, you know, seemingly, you know, hell-bent on, you know, putting that incinerator right on the county line. So, you know, we don't need to, you know, push that issue. So, if you could speak to that.
Sure. So, as you know, the CND component would be a piece of the recycling, and so that is part of that. But as far as the other types of recycling, that discussion is really more about, we were waiting for the solid waste authority study to be complete because that's the larger conversation. But the CND piece of that recycling would be covered in this, in this short-term analysis and for the CND. And so, what we're looking at is November, the last week of November to get that back, and we'd be bringing that back to the board as well.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Fer.
Thanks. Just a couple of reminders. One, this is just a notice of public hearing. And then, second, just as a reminder, when the solid waste authority was created, this board held on to that responsibility to figure out what we do with disposal. That was not delegated and is still not delegated. That's what this is all about. This is looking into the future. Where are we going to put garbage for effort? That, you know, both the last, the land use amendment of allowing that to go from electrical generation back to what it was before, which was landfill, and then going higher to allow for more expansion, but with the caveat that we are going to, because of the, and in the interest of that region, take away the things that are most, the negative factors, taking all the organics out of that so that you don't have the smell. A plan that we're working on towards biosolids with, to take that, all those things that smell, all those things, the organics that, one, they don't smell good, but they also create greenhouse gases. We are in the forefront of doing some pretty amazing stuff here, but we're not going to be doing it today. Today is a notice of public hearing, and there will be a discussion of this, and I think, Chris, you may be giving a presentation maybe next Friday or...
Yes, sir. Friday.
Yeah. And this is a chance where all the cities will be there. They'll have a chance to hear very, their long presentation and hear some of the things that, what I, to what Mayor Rydeau was talking about, what kind of terms, what kind of conditions might be offered in exchange for that. So, that's a very good opportunity. All the cities will be there, and I think that's probably the place to do it. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second to the motion? A second by Senator Geller.
Mayor, is this...
Is this for all four?
If I can do it for all four, I'll do it for all four. You can, yes. And, you know, I just want to also be clear just on, Vice Mayor, just on one point that you made, you know, Waste Management is, understands what the concerns are. Waste Management may proffer certain things that, yes, that the board, you know, may consider in its legislative capacity. There's no bargaining per se going on, you know, at this point. They're listening. They would like to have this, you know, an affirmative vote at some point.
And there's things that we would like.
Yes, sir.
Same.
And yes, you may move all four items at the same time.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Yes, I'm going to get to her in just a second. I'm just clarifying the motion, please. I have a motion for 16, 17, 18, and 19 to move for, adopted, moved to public hearing. Okay. You have a question, Commissioner?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just wanted the garbage from the hospitals, places like that. I keep hearing all different type of waste being discussed. I have never heard anyone speak to the waste that's coming from hospitals and where do you take them? Go ahead. That's all my questions.
I think what you're going to see is every possibility of stream of garbage, like school board, I've talked to the school board, they would like to start taking all of their cafeteria food that is source separated, compost all of it, which is amazing. That's a huge amount of our garbage. Imagine doing the same thing for the hospitals, for the airport, for the seaport, and then you start to reduce all the contamination, which is why many places wouldn't take it. So, there's some pretty big things in, but you're exactly right. Obviously, they have hazardous waste there as well, so that all has to be source separated. And, yes.
So, okay, good answer, and I'm saying, when I hear my colleague from the north and my colleague from the south, I said, "Not in my backyard again." All right? So, we have to be careful as we plan for future...
If everybody would just put it in their own backyard, we wouldn't even...
And...
Just bury it in the back.
Okay. Okay, but this, we're going to go, move ahead on this motion, but I just have to, one thing to say, it has to go somewhere, okay? It has to go somewhere, and that responsibility is ours to determine. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. One opposition. Okay. We are going to move on now, see where we are again. Okay. So, we have item number 22. Senator Geller, Commissioner Fer, Commissioner Ryan, all pulled that item. Commissioner Geller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 22, which I assume will still pass unanimously today, is a really, really important item, and I just wanted to call everybody's attention to this and also to thank administration for this. You have all heard me from this day as talk about that our future here in Broward will involve arcs and houseboats because of flooding. The weather patterns in the climatological classification of Broward County is either tropical rainforest or tropical monsoon, depending on how close you are to the coast. It rains a lot, and the rainfall is increasing because of climate change. Actually, it's not, the total isn't increasing, but it comes in much more concentrated periods of time, which would result in increased flooding anyhow, but because of sea level rise in, according to Dr. Harado, our foremost expert, in about 10 years, we will not be able to drain at all. It'll be high tide because we drain through our large canals into the ocean, and with the exception of one at 441, the rest of them are all gravity-fed. I've been saying for years and years that we're going to be underwater and there's nothing that we can do about it, except now we have a ray of hope because the county administration was able to put $5 million in South Florida, which was matched by the South Florida Water Management District in order to pay for the study that we need, which is going to move us ahead of Dade and Palm Beach, which opted not to do this. So, we are hoping that in the 2026 federal WARDA bill, that we will get funding to improve our drainage. Unfortunately, we're told it'll be about 15 years to finish that project if everything goes right. And it never everything goes right, but at least we can limit the period of time that we'll be underwater. We won't be underwater as much, and if we can prioritize and start construction on the canals that are in the worst shape, that will be critical. So, I just wanted, after you've heard me complain for years and years, arcs and houseboats were going to be underwater, this relatively small investment, we're hoping will bring down the billion dollars plus that we need in federal funds, and it's a really, really, really significant issue. And I want to thank administration for doing this and let everybody know how happy we are on this.
Commissioner Fer.
Thank you. I don't need to add much to that. I think you've already said it all, but it did take, it has taken, since I've been on this commission, 10 years, it has been trying to be, find some way to get this study done while the years tick off and it gets more and more urgent. I do want to thank Dr. Harado. I'd see you there because I know you've been part of the negotiations in the middle and pushing from day one. I think you've pushed all of us on this. But I think, you know, numerous, I think the South Water Management District with Drew Bartlett is making a big difference, having him there. And us putting some skin in the game made all the difference in the world. I don't think it would have happened if we hadn't done that. It would not have happened, and we would just be right where we are waiting. So, I'm glad you were able to find the money to be able to do this. I think we all understood how important it was and important for generations to come. So, thank you very much.
County Administrator, you have any comment?
Well, you all thanked me, but I want to thank you because you are the ones who voted on the budget and approved this very needed study money. And certainly, I want to, of course, thank Dr. Harado and Lenny Villapondo, and of course, all of the Brazilian Environment Department and the team initiative because they have been working behind the scenes with the Water Management District. Drew Bartlett has been amazing to work with, and we took a couple of leaps of faith during the summer as we were talking about this, moving forward, and we're really holding our breath and crossing our fingers. We knew we had the support of the board, but we needed to make sure the board adopted the budget with the money in it. And actually, tomorrow morning, while there's been work behind the scenes starting on this over the summer, tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday morning, at the Riverbend Hearing Room over here on Broward Boulevard is the official kickoff and Drew Bartlett. The support.
Yeah, and one last thing. We also have been able to get the support of the 16-county coalition on this, which is very helpful because the Army Corps is always there, the South Florida Water Management District is there, and the 16-county coalition voted in favor of their support for this. Sounds good. Thank you.
Dr. Harado is out there. Do you have anything you would like to add, Dr. Harado? We just want to thank you for constantly being on this and shepherding this whole thing forward. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I didn't want to have this issue come up without, you know, some recognition of Senator Geller and, you know, I hesitate to do that, but at the same time, he is, he is really like the, you know, canary in the coal mine on this one. He was well aware some time ago, and I, you know, sit on the... He was well aware some time ago, and I, you know, sit on the, you know, Water Resources Board with him, and he's been a leader on this, puts a lot of time in. Seems like, you know, he and Dr. Harado are out double dating all the time now, and, but you have accomplished a lot, and you really need to be recognized for that. You know, the latest voting demographic, you know, showed that the youngest voters, their number-one issue is, you know, climate change, you know, climate resiliency. And it is so important, you know, that we, you know, pay attention to what younger voters, younger people are telling us about, you know, how critical this is. So it's tough, and I was hoping, Dr. Harado, that you could just mention a little bit, what are we supposed to be accomplishing with this, you know, study of the, you know, Hillsborough Basin, the Broward Basin? What exactly, you know, do we hope to accomplish, you know, partnering with the Water Management District on this?
Thank you, Dr. Harado.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, Mayor Vice Mayor. First, I just, I would like to make the same acknowledgements. I think your leadership has been just absolutely exceptional, the whole board, and really appreciate the awareness. I mean, you've already articulated the issues quite well, but we wouldn't be where we are if you weren't the vocal champions and so knowledgeable and effective. So just thank you, and it's a tremendous milestone. We've acknowledged for the last 10 years, and we've had Army Corps leadership, the colonels acknowledging that the system simply isn't functioning now the way it was designed. We already have reduced discharge capacity continuously because of the sea level rise that has already occurred. And some of the deficiencies are that we have a gravity-controlled system without the pumps, and we simply will have to invest energy to more actively move water moving forward. So the primary issue, Commissioner Ryan, is the need to address the gates that do not have pumps, and we need to overcome that gravity barrier. So the study itself is going to prioritize the design and engineering required for the retrofit in order to elevate the gates themselves so that we don't have overtapping at high tide, because currently, we can get water from the coast moving into the canal network, and if that happens, we could contaminate our water supplies. So we need to elevate those gates to make sure overtopping does not occur, and then we need those pumps to come in. There will be additional features that will need to be addressed, and the study itself will probably make recommendations about needing to elevate the berms and potentially elevate, you know, or widen the cross-sections of the canals. Those additional recommendations will come through a more comprehensive study that's moving in parallel, but this study is really focused on prioritizing and accelerating the recommendations for those pumps and the retrofit of those gates so that we can move it to the WARDA authorization, ideally in 2026, was already mentioned by Senator Geller.
So rather than just utilizing the spillway, we're looking at a pumping station, you know, to move some of that water. How do you integrate the, you know, the water discharges that we're able to regulate with the C-51, you know, canal system? How are you able to regulate that so that we can, you know, minimize, you know, the flooding that we've been experiencing?
Well, the C-51 reservoir was constructed in order to hold water that could later be redistributed to Broward County, Miami-Dade County, augmenting water supplies, but if there's not capacity in the canal network to move and store that water, then we would be not able to take advantage of the C-51 project in the same capacity longer term. So just by maintaining the ability to store and move water, and all of these features are interconnected, and it's about optimizing the work of the system together.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, thank you for your kind remarks.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we've got a couple of, okay, we've got Commissioner Furr making the motion and Commissioner Ryan seconding the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay. All right, now we're going to move to 24. Commissioner Rogers, I believe you pulled that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the owners, or the new owners of this property, that the roadway in front of that property needs repairs, and I'm just curious as to when we were considering the funding, if we thought about the fact that school buses, fire trucks, a hospital is on that roadway, and the roadway is in bad, is in disrepair. And I just wondered if that was a consideration, any consideration when they were talking about renovating and investing $22 million, if transportation was part of the discussion?
We have somebody who can answer that question?
No one's here?
I was going to ask Mr. Stone if he might be able to come up.
The circumstance with the HFA funding here is they're really operating as a conduit bank, so the considerations that you're talking about would normally be in the context of a land use amendment or site plan considerations, or whatever communications that the new owner would have with the city and surrounding neighborhood. They're here, I'm sure they heard you. I know that there are a couple of issues that they've already been working with the neighborhood and the city on to clean up. They're not the owners yet, they won't be until this is closed, but that would be when they would take those issues up.
Okay. I hear you, Mr. Stone, and I'm going to disagree, as my colleague would say sometimes. I'm disagreeing. If they're in the room and someone from that neighborhood is here and asking a very important question, you're buying this property, you should know that the roadway is not good, and you should make sure that that is part of the remedy. Somehow, you have a remedy to that situation. But they, we can talk away from this mic, but it's not going away. It needs to be addressed. Thank you.
26.
We are moving to 26, I think is abstention.
Madam Mayor, item 26 involves American Heritage, which is owned by all stated client of my law firm because of proposed item financially, impact a subsidiary of my law firm's client. I'll be leaving the dais, not voting, recusing, and filling the form out.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Motion to bring him back.
I just wanted to see how fast you could move. Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Furr, seconded by Commissioner Fisher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I'm also...
It's been a very, very long time.
Mayor? Mayor?
Okay.
I'm also in support of item 24. So I wasn't in the room, I was walking in.
Okay, sure, thank you.
So Mayor, 26 is eight, zero, with one abstention.
Correct. Okay. All right. So, no, actually, he was, Commissioner McKenzie, I believe, was talking about item number 24.
I was on you, James Hatch, and then I, in fact, I'm...
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we have number 63, I think is the last one that was pulled by Commissioner Furr.
Thank you. This is, Lamar, you actually put this on there.
I did, yes.
And go ahead, if you want to speak to it.
Well, no, it was just to bring it forward to, obviously, we want to have folks the ability to be able to have transportation, to get on and vote, and we had done this, I think, back in 2020, I believe it was, and so I thought it was appropriate to continue the tradition and make it on our national level, so that's why I wanted to bring it forward, to put it on there. And so people have no excuse, they have transportation to be able, at free cost, to get there, so that's why I bring the item forward.
I just wanted to give you, give a chance to see you had a megaphone there.
Thank you.
This is a great idea for everybody wanting to vote. If you can't, you know, no excuse, you can get on the bus. The buses are everywhere. Okay. Motion to approve.
Second. This is my item, I'll second it.
All right. Motion, second.
Actually, if you...
All in favor.
No, it's all good, it's all good.
No, it's okay, it's okay. All right. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good, very good item. Thank you. Okay. So let me see, I think we are now at 64, which is a motion to discuss the South County Courthouse in Hollywood. We have to, yeah, all right, we can go back to public hearing after this. Yeah, we're going to take this first.
As I am, you know, fast approaching, you know, my retirement from the county, I thought it was incumbent that, you know, I bring up discussions that the county staff has had with the City of Hollywood staff with regard to the South Satellite Courthouse. We are on a schedule to demolish the existing South Satellite Courthouse, which is located on a four-and-a-half acre parcel of land. It's just, you know, outdated and presents kind of like security risks and mold and, you know, other issues that, you know, will not be rectified except through a full demolition. At the same time, the City of Hollywood is demolishing their site where their current police department is, on Hollywood Boulevard, just some two to three blocks to the east of where the South Satellite Courthouse is. The parcel where the Hollywood Police Station is, which also includes an area where the driving range was for the Orange Brook, I don't know if you'd call it a country cub, but, you know, that's rather generous, although I will tell you, Bean Furr got, you know, many a birdie on that, those two courses, probably a couple eagles, too. Yeah. But that's about a eight-and-a-half acre site that would be about twice the size of the current, you know, county site where we have the South Satellite Courthouse. It's not as advantageous of a parcel, it's got, you know, some issues with ingress egress, the site has some level of contamination, arsenic, you know, and that's, you know, what happens with, you know, golf courses. So there's been some discussion of whether there would be a swap, a land swap, which would give more acreage for the county to perhaps, you know, combine the South Satellite Courthouse judicial complex with some, a human services component. And the county, you know, has looked at a, you know, kind of a conceptual, you know, plan of going forward with due diligence, and it requires, you know, that the city would, you know, from the county's perspective, would, you know, transfer the entire parcel. The city initially wanted to transfer a smaller component of it, about six acres, but the county needs, you know, the entire parcel, and the city would have to be, you know, have a no further action with regard to any contamination on site and, you know, identify and hold harmless the county for any, you know, future contamination based upon the existing conditions. So with those very important issues that, you know, would have to be clarified and agreed to prior to going forward, then, you know, other issues could be negotiated. Hollywood has been really, I think, negotiating in good faith, and they really just want to get kind of an understanding of what does the county really want to do on that site, and how does it, you know, affect the, you know, the redevelopment of Orange Brook. So I'm just bringing this to your attention because, you know, in another month or so, you'll have a new county commissioner, and, you know, much of the work on this project is going to have to be, you know, picked up by Commissioner Furr. Of course, he's, you know, able and more than willing to take it on. And on the courthouse construction task force, you know, serving with me is Commissioner Bogan, so I would expect him to take a leadership role and, you know, get a lot of credit, you know, for getting the judges into a, you know, a new South Satellite Courthouse without all that mold. So with that in mind, you know, I'm ready to, you know, go into any further discussion, but that was about all that I felt that I needed to bring up at this point, and I have been working with the county administrator, and her team has been, you know, very responsive, and we seem to be moving along. And Monica, if you want to comment on this with your own analysis?
Excuse me. Yes, Commissioner. So you framed the conversation very well as far as, you know, the conversations we've been having with the City of Hollywood. As many of you know, Mr. Kelleher in my office has been kind of leading that conversation with the city and serving as point. You know, it's gone back and forth a few times, as you know, and, you know, the conversation about making sure whatever property we get is free of contamination, that they do the remediation, and that it's given over to the county and that condition. And the biggest consideration also is the amount of space that we would need. The last bit of, we had a consultant look at the last proposal that was given to us, and as of now, and Kevin's got that information here, and you can come up here, Mr. Kelleher, and maybe share that. But, you know, if it doesn't end with what he's got, and the city is willing to consider an additional option, obviously, we'd consider the conversation is still be ongoing, but as of now, I don't know that it's adequate, but please fill in the blanks.
Yeah. Good morning, Kevin Kelleher, County Administration. Yeah, we've had ongoing conversations with the city, and Commissioner Ryan really encapsulated everything that has gone on thus far and where we're at. We had received information over the summer months from the city, because they did not want to give the 8.65, the remaining parcel to the county, and they only want to give six acres. We had our architect consultants go and see whether it was feasible, and, you know, they determined that it would be inadequate, that we would need the entire 8.65 parcel because of how it's situated and because of the contamination on there. I had conversations with the city representative last week, just letting them know that we would need the whole 8.65 parcel, we would need it free from contamination, and the hold harmless information that Commissioner Ryan talked about. I also shared with them the study that our consultant has done, the executive summary as well as the 98-page analysis that they've done. And so they're looking at that, and they're, the ball's in their court to come back to us as to whether they're willing to proceed. You know, they may have some, they may have some issue with future parking or stormwater retention that they may want to discuss, but, you know, as Commissioner Ryan said, those are points that, you know, could be discussed in, you know, some sort of partnership.
Thank you, Kev.
We do have a representative from the City of Hollywood, but apparently, she's en route and is going to be here in a few minutes, but, you know, if you want to continue the item, or, you know, if this is the last thing we're doing before we go into the workshop, then, you know, we'll have to pick it up later.
I believe, public hearing, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Kevin, come back. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have an interest in this also, only I don't represent it, but I did represent that area for 20 years in the legislature, so I still sometimes think of myself as representing Hollywood, because old habits die hard. What kind of contamination are we talking about on our, on their property? And if we're talking about a land swap, do we have issues with our property at the courthouse, whether it's asbestos or our own contamination? Because other than the contamination issues, it sounds like we should be able to get a deal for the land swap. it sounds like we should be able to get a deal for the land swap. But I'm concerned about potential contamination on both our property and their property. Without getting into too specific details, can you give us the general contamination questions on both? Have there been phase one or phase two environmentals?
Yes, Lenny has, and he ran away. But the contamination, the contamination on their property is arsenic because it was, you know, a former golf course. I think it was even tomato farms before that. So the fertilizers that were used in that. There's also petroleum because it was a police station. They had petroleum tanks on there that, so there, those types of issues. We do not have, we do not have any known contaminations on our property. And our property is a building, so it's not, you know, it's not likely that we have those same types of issues. But we do not, we do not have those reports though. We don't have a phase one or phase two on our property.
No asbestos that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I wanted to clarify one other thing. So you had mentioned, you know, if it was just the contamination issue, that would be kind of a hurdle on the property swap. And it's not just that, it's literally the space. We just want to make sure that there is sufficient acreage for what we need to do. And at the six acres, I understand it's insufficient.
Yeah, well, because part of it is, is the way the contamination is located. It restricts the use of certain areas. Plus, there's ingress egress because of, there's roads there that border residents that, that would create...
I'm very, very familiar with that property. I've done a dozen functions at that country club over the years.
And also, as I stated, we're happy to continue the conversation. It's just, in its current state, it would not be workable.
And if I could also add, there's also a traffic analysis that was part of the architects, you know, getting in and out of it on Park Road, which is a very busy road. If it's the front part of the acreage and they only give you six acres, you're like one, two car lengths to turn onto Park Road, which you'll be backed up, so that's why you need to further property.
Yeah, in full disclosure, you know, in addition to the contamination, there was, you know, the need to do all of our, you know, water retention on site. And for that reason, we needed, you know, this larger parcel. Some of the discussion with Hollywood was whether there would be some effort to, you know, allow Hollywood to have, you know, access to some of that water retention capacity. And then, you know, some discussion about overflow parking. Those were issues that I said were unresolved. If we get past the big issues, then we could start to discuss those.
And one quick comment?
Oh, and I'm sorry, Mayor, the city representative is here and would like to speak for a minute, if she could. Okay. Here she is.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Nicole Heron, Deputy Director of Design and Construction Manager for the City of Hollywood. I'm here today on behalf of Mayor Levy and Rayland Story, who could not be here. We'd like to say, first of all, that we've worked very successfully over the past several months, up to a year, with Larry Mahoney, Arietna, Kevin Kelleher and his whole team, as well as Justin Architects, on the collaboration for this potential land swap. We've worked on site plans, locations, environmental aspects, as well as stormwater and potential parking impacts. We believe that this is a mutually beneficial project for the city and the county. And Mayor Levy and his team, as well as the city, view this as a win-win, as it'd be a beautiful new permanent location for the South Regional Courthouse, as well as a location where the City of Hollywood could take your existing site and perhaps do mixed-use low to moderate income or mixed-income residences. We'll work to accommodate the stormwater and parking as needed, as well as are open to conversations regarding the parcel size. Thank you for your time today, and I will take any questions you have at this time.
Yeah, hi, Nicole, how you doing?
Good, very good, thank you.
A couple things. One, you know, I know the police, the police building for Hollywood, when does that construction begin?
So we broke ground on August 12th. It's in construction now. Our substantial completion date is Q3 of 2026.
So when we're talking about that part, that other part being contaminated, obviously, that's gonna require a lot of ground removal, correct? Probably?
Yeah, so we've done a phase one and phase two environmental on the site we're building currently. We had the same sort of conditions that you all spoke about as well. It used to be a driving range, right? So you find the typical arsenic, et cetera. We're doing two things. Either we're excavating, because it's only the top six inches of soil, and/or removing it from site, or we're capping it where we are required and/or can by Broward County Environmental under concrete or asphalt. Those could be the same sorts of things, and I believe Justin Architects put that in your, in your study, that we could do also on the north parcel. The difference between...
In other words, using some synergy and doing them together?
Yes, well, our site is under construction now. The north parcel, which is our existing police department, won't be demoed until our site is built. The guys and gals move into their new site, and then that will be demoed. So it would be a separate, separate project. However, it could run concurrent one after the other.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to see if there's some synergy here and timing, because that entire golf course is getting redone.
Correct.
Where there's gonna be a ton of heavy equipment out there that could move a ton of dirt if they needed to. But that's not for two years, or a year or two years.
Correct.
I know, exactly, exactly. And I'll be saying the same thing you did, or I'll be handing it off to somebody else. So I guess I'm looking to administration, if there's, if there's ways of synergy here, knowing what's about to happen, knowing that all that, that construction's happening there, if there's ways of us working together on that, it makes some sense for both parts. I do think this is actually a good swap. I think it is a good, both for the county and for the city. It provides affordable housing for the, for the city and provides kind of a, some synergy here with the police department and the courthouse together. Is it, I know, I know the plan is already there for the police department. But is there any way of working with the parking? So there's dual or additional parking that could be used for both?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, sorry for my tardy arrival. Rayland Story, Assistant City Manager for the City of Hollywood. That absolutely is one of the things that I think would be a topic of discussion as we go, as we go forward, if that's the desire of the commission. We, we believe that we have accommodated the current needs of our police department within the building we have now. But we are seeing that there may be some vehicle storage needs related to evidentiary vehicles and other types of things that we may not have been able to fully accommodate on site. And so we've been looking at our Public Works Administration facility as possibilities for that. But if there is the possibility of sharing in a shared parking facility with the county, I think that would be also desirous and may fit with the plan that the county has as well.
Okay, yeah, wherever there's some synergy, we can use it. And Tim, thank you, Commissioner Ryan, thank you for all you've done on this. Because you've been at, you've been at this for quite a while, so, thank you.
It's always slow, Lenny.
I know. Yep, but thank you, and thank you, Rayland. Appreciate it.
We're gonna move to public hearings. We are moving to number forty-nine, item forty-nine.
The public hearing on item forty-nine is now open. Item forty-nine is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades vessel, oily waste removal services franchise to World Petroleum Corp. for a five-year term. No members of the public have signed up to speak on the item.
Motion by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner Udine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Item fifty, please.
The public hearing on item fifty is now open. Item fifty is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades Marine Terminal Security Services franchise to American Guard Services, Inc. for a five-year term. No members of the public have signed up to speak on the item.
Okay. Moved to approval by Commissioner, by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Number fifty-one, please.
The public hearing on item fifty-one is now open. Item fifty-one is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades Marine Terminal Security Services franchise to VOK Protective Services, Inc. for a five-year term. No members of the public have signed up to speak on the item.
Thank you. Moved by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner Udine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, a little louder, right, for our Port County Attorney. A little louder, okay.
Aye.
Aye, there you go. Opposed, all right, there you go. That's what he wants. Okay, item number fifty-two, please.
The public hearing on item fifty-two is now open. Item fifty-two is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades Marine Terminal Security Services franchise to Universal Protection Service, LLC, doing business as Allied Universal Security Services, LLC, for a five-year term. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
Motion by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner Udine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there you go. Okay, fifty-three is the first of two required public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on November 12th. Please read the...
The public hearing on item number fifty-three is now open. This is the first of two required public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on November 12th, 2024. No vote by the board is required at this time. Item fifty-three has four parts. Part A is a motion to approve amendment number one to lease agreement with the United States of America for real property located at 3700 Macintosh Road, Hollywood, Florida, consisting of approximately 34,783.1 square feet of land and improvements at Port Everglades to extend for an additional one-year term, commencing on October 1st, 2024, with fourteen automatic one-year renewal terms. Part B is a motion to approve amendment number one to lease agreement with the United States of America for real property located at 1801 Eller Drive in Hollywood, Florida, consisting of approximately 70,373.7 square feet of land and improvements at Port Everglades to extend for an additional one-year term, commencing on October 1st, 2024, with fourteen automatic one-year renewal terms. Part C is a motion to approve amendment number one to lease agreement with the United States of America for real property located at 4325 Macintosh Road, Hollywood, Florida, consisting of approximately 34,443.3 square feet of land and improvements at Port Everglades to extend for an additional one-year term, commencing on October 1st, 2024, with fourteen automatic one-year renewal terms. Part D is a motion to approve amendment number one to lease agreement with the United States of America for real property located at 2090 Southeast 42nd Street, Hollywood, Florida, consisting of approximately 43,485.1 square feet of land and improvements at Port Everglades to extend for an additional one-year term, commencing on October 1st, 2024, with fourteen automatic one-year renewal terms. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
You may discuss it if you feel you wish to, but otherwise, we're past this item.
So we don't need the motion, then? Yeah, right, okay. We'll move on to item number fifty-four.
The public hearing on item fifty-four is now open. Item fifty-four is a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county administrator or the director of the Transportation Department to submit a grant application to the Florida Department of Transportation for $2,250,000 in federal and state grant program funds for state fiscal year 2025, to be used in conjunction with a 10% local match for the purchase of 18 ADA accessible transit vehicles for paratransit services. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
We need a motion on that one, yeah. A motion by Commissioner Fisher, seconded by Senator Geller. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. Now we have a quasi-judicial public hearing. I think Maite is going to conduct that. I will turn it over to her.
The quasi-judicial public hearing on item fifty-five is now open. Item fifty-five has two parts that will be considered at the same time, but voted upon separately. Motion A is a motion to adopt resolution allocating twelve residential flexibility units in accordance with the county land use plan. Motion B is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to the rezoning of Lot 16 and 17, Block 5 of Washington Park Platte, as recorded in Platte Book 11, Page 22 of the official records in the Municipal Services District from one family, from one family detached dwelling district to Garden Park Neighborhood District. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
Any ex parte communications regarding these items shall be disclosed as part of the proceeding. If any commissioner has had any ex parte communication regarding this item that has not made part of the record, please submit it into the record at this time. If any commissioner has had any oral ex parte communication, please disclose it and the general nature of the communication at this time. The county commission will accept personal testimony related to item fifty-five.
Madam Mayor, a question?
I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Does, does that include ex parte communications
we had with county staff during our briefings?
No, it doesn't.
Thank you.
The county commission will accept personal testimony related to item fifty-five. The applicant, staff, and all witnesses wishing to provide sworn testimony must be sworn. Testimony made but is not required to be sworn. However, testimony that is not sworn is not assigned the same weight and credibility as testimony that is sworn. Attorney's license to practice law in the state of Florida are not required to be sworn, providing testimony unless they intend to present sworn testimony. Persons providing testimony should indicate whether they have been sworn. Ms. Perro, may the board secretary swear in person who intend to give sworn testimony at this time?
Yes, Ms. Fenmore.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
At the conclusion of the quasi-judicial proceeding and deliberation by the board, the board may approve staff's recommendation and approve the rezoning and flex unit allocation. Alternatively, the board may determine that the applicable requirements of land use plan and zoning code have not been met and deny the application. If the board determines that the testamentary or documentary evidence or information justifies allowing additional research or review in order to properly determine the issues presented, Section 1332 of the Court of Ordinances provides that the board may continue the hearing for up to two weeks or until the next board meeting of the county commission after the two-week period. Mississauga, may you please present a brief synopsis of the nature of the application, summarize the issues, and make a recommendation on the application?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Giles Sissoudia. I'm the Director of the Open Planning Division, and I will try to keep this brief for you this morning. Item fifty-five is an application to change the zoning on a one-quarter acre site located on the north side of Sistrunk Boulevard, east of Northwest 24th Avenue in the Franklin Park neighborhood of the Broward Municipal Services District. This location is shown on Exhibit 4, Page 2. The site has a land use designation of low-medium residential, which currently would allow three units on the property. It is zoned RS6, which is our one-family detached district. The site fronts Sistrunk Boulevard and is adjacent to the city of Fort Lauderdale. The adjacent land use in the city of Fort Lauderdale is the Northwest Regional Activity Center, which is on the east side of the property, as you can see in Exhibit 4. The applicant, Vacant Land Men LLC, is requesting to rezone up the property to the GP1 Garden Park Neighborhood District to allow development of up to fifteen multifamily units. The board is asked to approve two motions. The first motion would allocate twelve flexibility units to the site. As I said, it has currently three units entitled to it, so three plus twelve would be the fifteen units that they're asking for. Motion B would approve the rezoning from the RS6 district to the GP1 district. Staff have reviewed the application under the criteria listed in Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances and found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Broward County Land Use Plan and the Broward County Comprehensive Plan, that it is compatible with adjacent development, and that it would allow for new multifamily housing development. These findings are specified in Exhibit 2 that's attached to the gen item. Additionally, staff met with the Franklin Park Neighborhood Association, and the association expressed no objections to this proposal. Therefore, we recommend approval of the rezoning application. Thank you.
Yeah, Senator Geller.
Thank you. Mississauga, the property is less than a quarter of an acre. I think it's .23 acres.
Yes.
Is that net or gross?
I'm sorry?
Is that net or gross?
That is gross.
Okay, do you know what the net acreage is?
I would have to look that up. I'm sorry, I do not have that immediately available.
Okay, I'm just wondering if you've looked at, even if it was at gross acreage, that would be a density of greater than sixty units per acre?
Okay, the .23 is net acreage.
Oh, it is net, that's better.
It is net acreage, I apologize, yeah.
Okay, so just simple question. You're looking at a density of basically still more than sixty units per acre. Can they fit fifteen units on, plus parking, on a site that's less than a quarter of an acre? If you say yes, then I'm fine with it.
So the GP1 zoning would allow potentially for that development? However, they may need a variance to accommodate the open space, the green space on the property?
They clearly can have the green space, but that's up, you know, we'll decide on variance at that time. I'm just wondering if they can physically fit on a site that's less than a quarter of an acre, fifteen units plus parking?
I believe that is possible, yes.
That's all I needed to know, thank you.
They would be very small units, of course.
Are there any additional questions of Mississauga?
Just real quick, just for the record, I had inquired as to whether this would constitute spontan... I had inquired as to whether this would constitute spot zoning, and just for the record, you had, I think you had said, no, this would not, correct?
That was me.
Oh, was that to you?
Yes, that was me, and that's correct.
So, just for the record.
I do not believe this would constitute spot zoning.
Okay. That's one on the record. Thanks.
Commissioner Ryan.
Mayor, I had one question. Is this an amalgamation of several parcels, or is this really just a standalone one-quarter acre parcel that is going to be able to facilitate these 12 units?
It is a standalone parcel. It was combined from two lots originally. If you refer to exhibit four, you can see where the two lots were originally.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional questions of Mississauga? Is the applicant here, Mr. Shear? Do you have a presentation or any testimony you would like to present, Mr. Shear? Does any commissioner have questions of the applicant?
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Okay, there's a motion.
I just want to make a comment real quick. I told you earlier that I wouldn't support this, right? But you know I was joking. This is a lot that's been sitting on Sistrunk since I can remember. Staff was fortunate enough, the other day when we took our field trip to see the lot that we were proposing, not so much me, but the previous owner of the lot is a pillar, McWhite Funeral Home. Albert McWhite grew up two streets away from there. He participated in this because he wanted to see something improved and different in that area, right across from Board Funeral Home is where this parcel is. It's a great opportunity, Mr. Shear, and I welcome you and anything else we can do for you during this process. I'm all in support of it, but when you're riding by to get your haircut again, look to the left this time and take a look at it. So he's over there getting his haircut all the time, but no, it's a good project. I support it. And also, as disclosure, spoke with the applicant by phone.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner.
Well, I'll let Mackenzie make it.
Okay. You want to?
I'll tell him at the barber shop.
Is there a motion, a motion on part A first, the resolution?
On part A, yes. Commissioner Udine made a motion, and Commissioner Mackenzie seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay, and then we have B. Is there a motion for B, the rezoning of the property? Okay, Commissioner Mackenzie, make the motion. Okay, and Commissioner Udine can second it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. It's approved. Thank you, Mr. Shear. Okay. I think we are, are we complete, Mr.? Yes, I think that's it, right. Okay, we do have a workshop coming up, though, right after this. Okay. Let's go back to this. Okay. So, let me just see. Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go to non-agenda now, and first of all, I just want to recognize that Monica is going to be recognized as one of the 2024 YWCA South Florida first, but not the last, trailblazer on Saturday, October 26th, in Miami. So we say congratulations to you. So I'll go ahead and start over with Commissioner Rogers. Do you have anything for non-agenda?
May I ask you?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, please.
Okay, and inviting everyone to join me on Wednesday, October 23rd and October 24th for the 9th Annual Florida International Trade and Cultural Expo at the County Convention Center. It's all ours, but you know I'm going to be there all day, have visitors, international visitors coming into town for this annual event, and of course, I'm proud to say that they're going to be showcasing one of our off-port sites, foreign trade zones for the first time. Okay, so we, I'm proud of them. Thanks to our county administrator, Monica, thank you very much for whatever you did. It's working. Keep doing it. Thank you. All right. Then on Thursday, the 24th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., there'll be a webinar on the economics of cannabis legislation. Join me along with experts, speakers throughout thought-provoking conversation, discussion about opportunities, public health implications, and of course, a regulatory framework behind this emerging industry. So we're having the conversation and looking forward to hearing from everyone. Also, on Wednesday, the 30th, beginning at 9:00 p.m., no, it should be 9:00 a.m., join me at the Broward Housing Council, Affordable Housing. I'm talking to my constituents who are listening, Affordable Housing Workshop Addressing Conduit Reform at the Ann Cove Nature Center in Hollywood. I'll be introducing the keynote speaker, so I'm looking forward to that for somebody I know. Thank you very much, and looking forward to everyone being part of these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to invite people to two and a half functions. First, on November 10th, the Holocaust Documentation Education Center, that is a Sunday, will be having our grand opening of our next exhibit. This one is Anne Frank. It's an international traveling exhibit. It's pretty amazing. I will invite all of the commissioners to attend. However, that's going to be a standing-room-only event, and there will also be, you know, very crowded, parking will be difficult. So I'm also going to be doing a separate event that the county commissioners, county senior staff, and the county cultural council will be invited to. So if you don't, if you want to be there for the grand opening with a large crowd, please let us know, because we need to get, I mean, unfortunately, because of security, we are only letting people in that have pre-registered, so if you do want to come to the grand opening, let me know. If not, I will pick a date after checking with everybody's calendars and invite you, and you're certainly welcome to come to both, but I do need to know if you're coming for security purposes. The second thing, as I mentioned, is on November 15th, which is a Friday, the South Florida Regional Planning Council and Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council are holding a joint major conference on the Silver Tsunami. We have national-level speakers coming in, of course, distinguished local speakers, including Mayor Rich in her capacity as Chair of the Area Agency on Aging, and many others. The SFRPC members are myself, Commissioner Udine, and Vice Mayor Farr. We're going to be having four major panels, one on finances, because I don't know how people will be able to retire in the future, one on zoning and land use to try and deal with the land use and development patterns for seniors, including housing that would be appropriate for seniors, for example, wider doorways that wheelchairs can fit in through, accessory dwelling units, things like that, one on transit as we deal with more and more seniors not being able to drive. We have to figure out better ways of transit, as well as better ways of walking. Sidewalks may need to be wider, and there's got to be a way of crossing major roadways. And finally, on healthcare, again, we know that this will sell out. We can only fit around 200 people. It's an all-day seminar at FAU in Boca, so please, if you are interested in attending, let my office know or let the South Florida Regional Planning Council know, but the room will sell out, or be filled. So if you're interested in attending that or the Holocaust thing on November 10th, please let my office know. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. First, there's been a couple of articles lately about different companies coming to headquarter and put their regional headquarters in Broward County. A lot more that, we're getting a lot more than gets publicized. I happen to have been speaking to Bob Swindell, and I thought the South Florida Business Journal article that they did last Friday really wasn't as good as it should have been, but Broward County is getting a good selection of businesses that are coming to take advantage of where we are in the nation. We're close to Miami-Dade and Palm Beach County, and I think the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance is doing a good job in making that happen and bringing those companies here. We're not going to get the bigger, quote-unquote, sexier companies, but a lot of the regional companies are coming out of Broward County, and I think it's important that we recognize it from the dais. So I thank them for their hard work on that. Last thing is, we're in Winterfest season, so I attended the Winterfest, I guess it's called the Grand Marshall Kickoff, where they pick who's going to be the Grand Marshall, or they let everyone know who's going to be the Grand Marshall. So I represented the commission there Saturday night. I know who the Grand Marshall is. It's public.
It is you?
No, it's not me. It is not me. I can't be on the boat for that long. It's Jack Wagner. You know who that is, Tim?
I've heard of him.
Okay. Jack Wagner, the guy from General Hospital, I think, is, he was an actor or whatnot. He's the Grand Marshall, so it's going to be a great event. Those are my only comments.
You sounded enthused.
But I think I have more followers than him, so maybe I will be better.
He does sound so grand. He's a good guy, though. He's a worship. He's a grand.
Yeah, at the last SEPTAC meeting, the Southeast Florida Transportation Committee, actually a pretty big thing happened. For many years, we've been looking at trying to do a railroad over on US 27. It's been studied, all, et cetera. This is with Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach. I think because of what's going on with Brightline and probably because of garbage, Miami-Dade's sending all their trash by garbage up to Okeechobee. There has been more of a need to expedite this. So at SEPTAC, it is, we passed, and it's funded, to begin a study to create a railroad from Miami all the way up to Okeechobee. And there's a lot of hurdles. This is going to be a long, this is going to be a long slide. But the fact that it's actually being studied in full, both FDOT, both four and six have agreed to do this together, the fact that they're working together means a lot. So it provides a lot of options for us in the future that could be good, that we might be able to use. So just want to let everybody know about that. I mentioned Reed for the Record earlier today, but if anybody wants to be on that, just do Hands on Broward, you can volunteer. Anybody can do that, and that's all I've got. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, can I interrupt? Long enough just to congratulate Commissioner Farr, who is the Chair of SEPTAC, and although he described it very briefly, he described this at greater length at the South Florida Regional Planning Council, and that really, really is a major accomplishment, which would not have occurred without Commissioner Farr's leadership.
It's like a total love fest up here. I love it.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, just very briefly, Mayor, of course, the committee board has reconvened, and Commissioner Udine and I are tag teaming together to make sure that we get all the sessions covered. It's really an interesting process, obviously, those who have served there and those who have not, take the opportunity to do next time, because it's really exciting, but the election's two weeks away, and early voting, of course, is happening, and the last day to get your mail-in ballot is the 24th, which is Thursday. And of course, thank you for the support for the free busing and opportunities for free fares for folks to get to vote, and also visit browardvotes.gov when it's working. And I say that in tongue-in-cheek, because there's a system that one company statewide runs these systems, and Broward seems to keep going down.
Did you just change it?
Yeah. It was supposed to be changed before this election, but it was not. So bear with the SOE, he's doing his great job in what he's doing, and get friends, family, everybody out to vote. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan.
You know, when we were coming out of COVID, some of the first, you know, kind of tech companies that were deciding to relocate to the South Florida area seemed to be interested in Palm Beach County, and especially, I think it was Morgan Stanley and, you know, some of the other large, you know, financial giants. So I'm very encouraged by, you know, your comments, Commissioner Udine. Kind of surprised me that, you know, being in the middle between Miami and West Palm Beach, that it's taking that long for us to be, you know, recognized. And I've always thought that, you know, really, the internet coast, you know, might be, you know, something that runs, what is the roadway that runs parallel Commercial Boulevard just to the north of it?
Cypress Creek.
Cypress Creek Road. You know, I thought that that was going to be a, you know, internet kind of superhighway, but, you know, I don't know how quickly that's coming along, but, you know, I wanted to, you know, recognize your efforts, because you've been working with, you know, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance for, you know, quite some time on that issue. And then the other thing is, when we break before we go back for our workshop on affordable housing, maybe we'll have enough time for a couple of us to go down there and do some early voting, because, you know, it's open now, and it's just going to get tougher and tougher as you get closer to Election Day, you know, in order to, you know, get your vote in, and you certainly don't want to be, you know, voting on Election Day if you don't have to, because long lines and, you know, everybody seems to be excited one way or the other on this upcoming election.
We've heard enough, we've heard enough.
I didn't say that just yet.
No, no, no.
It's okay.
Me either.
It's okay. I'm very quiet today, sir.
A couple of thank yous, actually three. Bob Swindell and the Florida Panthers, when I left the last meeting, I was going over to Board Anderson. They bought the Stanley Cup to Board Anderson High School because they're looking into a hockey facility on that campus. Secondly, I want to thank Monica and her staff for coming on the field trip with me to the BMSD, seeing what I see daily and what I come here and try to communicate with my colleagues. Thank you for that. And Saturday, we had the Wellness Jamboree at Delaville Park. If you haven't gone in the past, you should go. This is not my first time appearing, this is my second time in an official capacity, but I've been going all eight years that they've had that at Delaville Park. And I want to thank Dan West, Laureate Gene Willistine Lawson, and that park staff at Delaville. They're super. If somebody who saw me on social media giving out sandbags, two and a half days, they dug, bagged, loaded, and sometimes delivered sand. So I thought they did a bang-up job until we ran out of sand and we ran out of energy. So thank you.
Fitzy, which begins tomorrow at the Broward County Convention Center, and we're very excited to welcome representatives of over 70 countries to Broward County, where this year's themes are the importance of manufacturing and tourism to global trade. And I know everybody's probably getting over there at some point or another to bring a welcome message, but it's very exciting, the growth of this over the last number of years. As you recall, it was Commissioner Holness that really worked on this for so many years, and it's really quite an event for this community, so I just want to mention that. And then I just want to mention that last night, I chair the Advisory Board for the University of Florida Center for Jewish Studies, and last night, we had our first event here in Broward County, and it was really a wonderful experience and something we're going to do again and again now. This is the first, and it was, the center was established actually over 50 years ago. My husband and I have been involved with it for over 30. We have a professor named after my husband's father, Harry Rich, for Holocaust Studies. She was one of the speakers, as well as Rachel Gordon, who is another incredible young woman who focuses a lot on film and literature in Jewish history. And then the featured speaker was Dara Horn, who is pretty well-known throughout the, I guess you call the, not only having to do with Jewish studies, but things dealing with antisemitism and so forth, and she's just written. And she's just written a new book, is writing a new children's book, actually, based on Passover. So, it was quite a wonderful event, and we got to hear two of our, as I said, esteemed faculty members, Natalia Alexiun, who's our, my family's professor of Jewish Studies, and Rachel, blanking on her last name right now. She's also, as I said, a wonderful professor there. But it was, it was just nice to see that, that this community, and it's not just about, when you're talking about antisemitism, I want people to know that it's not just that. It is about hate, intolerance, any kind of, you know, of ways that you discriminate against other people. And it was just, you know, very well-received. And I want to tell you, Senator Geller, you'll be interested to know that Rosita Kennigsberg and her husband and I had invited them to join us for dinner the night before to meet some of the professors. And I've been looking for a kind of a symbiosis here for a couple of years, and we are now going to have that, because the University of Florida has interns in Jewish study, in the Jewish Studies Program, and they will now, they're going to be working with the Holocaust Documentation Center here, which is really exciting. And there's just a lot of good things that can come out of this kind of a joint relationship. So, it was just a nice evening. And I am, I don't know about all of you, but, well, first of all, I want to ask, Drew, do you have anything you want to?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say something about that Gator game yesterday, honey.
Nothing except for that, Mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have nothing to say about the Seminoles this year, unfortunately. I'll just say that. I'm very sorry for their series, their season so far. So, thank you for those of you who mentioned Fitzy, because, you know, that is a great event, and that kicks off tomorrow, so I look forward to seeing many of you there tomorrow and over the next couple of days. But I also wanted to tout our staff a little bit. You guys are always so great about giving kudos, and so I'll take your lead on this one, but I wanted to recognize a few folks on our team. Transportation Department, Cesar Perez received the Bus Technician of the Year, first runner-up from the Florida Public Transit Association. And our Highway Bridge Maintenance Division received the American Society of Civil Engineers' Small Project of the Year for 2024 for the Sheridan Bridge. I know you guys all know about what happened there, and over the Florida Turnpike Emergency Repair Project. And Broward County as a whole recently ranked 12th again, and we keep going up every year a couple of notches in the Healthiest 100 Workplaces in America from Healthiest Employers. So, a lot of that is due to the leadership you all and the support you give for the projects and the programs that we have, our wellness programs within the county. So, so, thank you. That was it.
Okay. Milton, I think. Okay. And so, we're going to adjourn, and we've got about, I think we said about 15 minutes? Okay, and we're going to move into this very, really very important thing, which is our workshop on homelessness.
12:45.
12:45. That's fine. That's 20 minutes. 12:45, sorry. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.